We'll call the meeting to order. We use this clock. That's better for me. Okay, would everyone please stand and face the flag so inclined? Enjoying some pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
We have one addition to the agenda, and we will call that 7B, purchase of computers and workstations for STEAM. Just add that to your agenda. It kind of piggybacks on 7A, I believe, so...
What is it called?
It's a purchase of computers and workstations for STEAM.
There's some chairs down here in front if you want to. Just to touch the STEAM.
The first positive. Okay. With that addition, I would look for an approval of the agenda as shown.
How many can I?
Kurt on the motion.
I'll second.
Rob on the second. Other discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Carrie. Schedule presenters. We've had some conversation about operations and maintenance. Beth will present to us this evening, so...
Yeah, this is kind of the final piece, and I think one of the later agenda items is my final evaluation, kind of wrap-up for the year. This is one of those things that we've been working on for a really long time. Putting the transportation five-year plan together was a lot easier. You know what cycle you're going to need buses and vans, and then we went ahead with technology, and we know earmarking where we want our money to go is always a little bit easier to do. This one has actually taken an incredible amount of time and energy to put together, and thanks Josh for actually putting the actual numbers together. But the big piece of it is down here at the bottom. We've talked a lot about a maintenance contract, and what that is is preventative maintenance on all of the rooftop units and HVAC systems that we've done. That's going to be a $50,000 price tag, and we need to do that for the next five years. Dave has worked really hard on this. He and Jerry both know a lot about permanent maintenance, and that is just the way it goes. We built in a 2% increase over each year after talking to several people, and that was pretty adequate. You'll go down to this year's expenditures, and I've got it kind of blown up so you can't see that. We've talked a lot about the tennis courts and the compressor at $20,000. Parking lot resurfacing has been on the agenda for quite some time as far as the facility committee goes. Dave is already working on actively getting those bids, because after July 1, we'll want to be considering and looking at that. Elementary plumbing, if you haven't been down there, this got moved quickly to the top as well. The sinks and the area around the sinks are literally eroding away. They're 30 years old. They're just like your home if you had a laminate tub. Hundreds of kids using them every day. They start to kind of pull away. There's also some toilet systems. As you're aware, the city has increased the water rates, and we want to make sure that we've got some high-efficiency toilets and sinks going on down there as well. We decided to split that. The team didn't think we needed to do all of that at once, that we could pull that apart and make that happen over two years for $10,000 each. Playground resurfacing would have to happen the following year. Playground equipment did not make it into the top five-year plan. As you're aware, Mr. Bell raised $40,000 for playground equipment. Now, the resurfacing, if you've been back there at all, I don't know if any of you walked back there, it is, it's really, really bad. But you don't have to resurface it like you do a tarred road that people drive on. It's a little bit different, and Dave can get into the details if you want to talk about that. Camera replacement, again, when we talked about our security system, we want to make sure that we're getting new cameras in all the time, so that will be in the year. If you go way up here to the top, are we on 2020 already? And then flooring repairs down in the, is it travertine?
Trazel.
Trazel, down by the fieldhouse where they laid that, the work. It's kind of the maroon color things. You can see some cracking and some things in there, so there'll have to be some resealing. Big one in 2021, and again, keeping everything on cycle, would be the track resurfacing at $50,000. Now, remember, these are today's prices. But what I've done is up here in Dave's budget, if you go a little more to the top, you look at this area, he's got $50,000 built in here for his repairs, his things that he knows that the school needs. So keep that in mind, that if it was to go over by $10,000, he would have to see if he wanted to use that in his budget. And then there's some other things that made the list. Lead testing, if you've been following the legislature at all. All schools cannot just go by their cities to get their water tested, which ours is done every year. It passes with flying colors. We now, because of a mandate, have to have it tested by a certain company. This company charges approximately $3,000 a year to have that done, when our city does it for us for free. It's unfortunate, but it's something we'll have to do. And then the last item is desks and chairs. We're doing rotating system of $10,000. Our chairs and desks are very, very old. 1989 down at the elementary, most of the chairs are just kind of broken apart. We're slowly trying to do that, but we built in $10,000 a year. The goal is to stay around 1.5 million, just a hair over that, for the next five years. That would really put us in line for our pupil unit and actually puts us under what other schools are spending for their facilities. But a lot of that's because we have a lot of new things as well. We have a new HVAC system on this roof. We have some newer things. One of the items that is not in this five-year plan, but I don't know if we'll make it five years, I'm just putting it out there so you're aware of it, is the elementary gym. And we can get into those details too. We're going to bring it to facilities and show some pictures. But the warping of the 1989 gym floor in there is starting to really show some, what's the right word, Dave?
Well, it's just, it's heaving.
Yeah. We did not seal it this year, because if we seal it, every time you put a coat on it, you can't close those big doors that go across there. The elementary gym is used a lot. You know, if you've seen a little kid on a scooter, they get to that part and they can't quite make it up. It's like a little mound, you know, things like that. Our dance team will mostly be down at the CCC now, so you don't have to worry about them catching themselves on it, because that's kind of what happens. You walk across it and you kind of catch yourself, because you don't necessarily see it, but it's not flat. So that has not been built in here. Dave was going to get me some bids. That might be one of those things that he has to take out of his budget. So what I did is I designed this budget to have more emergency, like the compressor. I want Dave to have the ability, I mean, obviously he would approve those things, but I want him to have the ability within his budget to do the emergency items that come up, so that nothing gets bumped down the road because of an emergency-type situation. If our water heater goes out in our home and we don't have a savings account, we have to find that money. I want to, I want to try to have a built-in savings account so that when the water heater goes out, we are ready to go. Dave and I have worked really hard on this budget. We feel like it's really good. You'll see some big numbers over here. That would be when we bought all the equipment. That equipment is now ours. Josh put in notes in here, see if I can have a plow truck, the front-end motor, those types of things. Those are now paid for. So how I'm able to give him the ability to have that money in his account is because we're saving on snow removal and things like that. So it's taken some time, three years to be exact, to kind of get this the way we want it to be, but we are now at a very, very good projection budget in our facilities. There are items that didn't make the list, and I wish we could put everything on here, but those, those things are just going to have to wait.
So how do we address those? I mean, tennis courts didn't make the list for a couple of years, and now we're forced to address it. Fieldhouse floor, I've been told that's, what, 15-year life? And it could go longer, but that's going to be six figures probably, right?
No, that isn't, that isn't what we heard. It did not make this five years. That is the sixth year. I mean, I can pull this projection out even more. I've got the list of items that are still waiting to be on the next list, but that puts us out at 20,022. And Dave, you didn't think that would need to be done before then?
Well, you know, when you're talking about multiple items that we're discussing and putting on here, you know, the prime example of, of the fieldhouse was the decision between the outside track and the fieldhouse. Well, the fieldhouse has a roof on it. The outside track doesn't. Am I going to get more life out of that fieldhouse before that outside track? Yeah, most likely. So I had to make a hard choice, and I chose outside track.
Okay. Well, I mean, so the fieldhouse, when it does come up, what figure are you looking at? Five figures or six figures for that floor?
I, I don't know.
Okay. I'm just looking at, when it does come up, it's going to be a big number. And how will we attack that? Are we going to be, everything seems big. I mean, tennis courts seem big.
Right.
Track will seem big. Resurfacing seems big.
And what we talked about is waiting, if you do the big items every two to three years, then you can do the small, the plummings, the things that kind of come in that are a little more like that. The difference, I think, is that you've really built in a nice repairs and maintenance for services right here, line 13. That is bigger than it's, than it's ever really been. So we're really giving him the money to keep things done well, so that even if he wanted to do resurfacing cracks of a tennis court or something like that, he could do that within his budget. Again, getting it approved by you, but the budget's already been there, so that money can get moved around. So when you get your proposed budget, this is how it's set in. I just think it's a better way to do it.
You're, you're creating the money there for those emergencies as needed, but as you get through the year and you're getting closer to the end of the year, depending on where that budget is, will depend on if you can do some of those other items. It's not that, they may not be on the list right now. It doesn't necessarily mean that some of these things won't be done within that five years. I mean, the, the building and the, and how it runs and the equipment will dictate some of that. But I think it's smart with the way that we've, we've done it, so an emergency comes up, we're, we're keeping our investment sound with what we've done in the last year, which is very, very important, and we're keeping the building running properly.
And trying to create a savings account for you. Dave is very good with money. He's never going to hopefully spend all 50 of that. That would then transfer over and again, create that, that savings account so that we're not in this, this dire need when a compressor blows and not taking it from other things that we have planned on.
What are we spending on average now for facilities? You're looking at 1.5 million, right, you're saying?
You, 1.4. I have issues in here. Isn't it on here, Josh?
It's the prior year number. 15, 1.4, 1.59. The first four or five pounds around.
Right down here.
Okay. So the whole outside?
But those have been some really big purchases. And remember, the difference with that, Rob, is you bought some really big equipment to, to save money down the road, so those numbers aren't, and Josh and I talked about that. How do you accurately show you that when you spent $100,000 on equipment, you know?
What's driving our health and safety bill? Is that, is that mandatory things that we're budgeting for? I mean, it comes in close to 45 all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Part of it is your long-term facility maintenance is eaten up by that already.
And you'll see that later tonight, too. I mean, you just don't have, exactly what Josh says, you just don't have the choices on that.
And health and safety spending isn't like a yearly budget. You're projecting three years out before you can spend that money, so it's well-planned ahead.
When you look, when we're looking at the number of students coming in, and I know this year's lower, are we starting to overextend ourselves? Are we starting to look at this as, in a vegetary form, where we have to really sit back and say, where are we looking at five years from now for, for pupil?
I am so glad you asked that question. I am starting to base, base everything off a class size of 75 instead of 100 like we're used to. What's different about facilities, it doesn't matter if you have 20 kids or you have 2,000 kids, I guess that's a bad example, but you really still need to keep up your facilities. That's, that's what the differences would be.
And then as we go forward with this, I know we've looked at, you know, we want to provide the best education that we can, but we've, we're into the eye, into one-on-one initiative, the iPads, and we're really driving for that, that goal. But eventually, looking at this, are we going to have to pull back on that a little bit going into the next years and say, hey, we may have to reallocate the funds here, because, you know, it looks like, to me, my feeling is that we're, we are starting to overextend ourselves. And it's like, do we have to pull back on some of these things a little bit? And I'm not saying, you know, it's just something 66.
You'll notice on your projected budget, the ones, the budget you're planning, we're, we're actually spending less.
Sure.
And we're projecting to spend less.
But do we have to get more aggressive? That's, that's my question. I, I'm just wondering if we have to really look at this again, because we've got a lot of things out there right now. And if we don't start addressing them sooner rather than later and be, and I'm not, but be more proactive, I think we could be looking at some bigger issues down the road.
And I think some of that is like doing our own snow removal, all those things. I mean, if you, you look at, we are spending so much less than we even did two years ago.
Understood, but we, we escalated greatly with one-on-one initiatives and all that. It's like, how, how can we get a balance there and still provide great education and great, you know, technology? But there's some things that we might have to draw back in, because that's an expensive item.
Sure.
And I, I just don't know, as we go forward here for the next, I, I think we really need to look at that maybe.
I built in, Josh built in, you know, if you get 2% every year, that's pretty, actually pretty low on the scale of what you should be doing. The only reason why we get away with that is because our facility is so upgraded. But if you compare this to other districts, facility-wise, we're actually very, very low. Don't tell Dave that.
I understand that.
Especially for the square footage.
Right, that's what I'm saying, for the square footage. We've got a lot of square footages for the amount of students that are coming in. And that's what I'm just saying, it's like, it's not going to be able to support itself if this continues, correct?
Well, and that's why we've set ourselves up with doing more things in-house. We've been thinking of us three years ago. So we are now setting ourselves up, and we are now creating those savings, and, and that's what's starting to project here. And then on top of it, we need to create a little bit of a history, especially when it comes to preventative maintenance, to truly tune in those numbers. But the goal is exactly what you're talking about.
Right. My question is, is it enough? I mean, we've been proactive at this point in, in our, in this time. Are we proactive enough? Or we have to really start looking at, look, do we have to make some other decisions here? I mean, I'm not saying, what you're doing is great, Dave. I'm just wondering, do we have to get more aggressive? I just don't know, looking at this one forward. Are you talking in facilities or you're talking overall? I think just overall here, you know? I, I don't know, but...
You know, this is our, this is our projection. We certainly don't have to follow this as, as time goes on. We always make changes on the fly, so I really don't know if this is a commitment so much as...
Right.
Rob and I had some conversation about this, and we were both concerned about things that pop up. And, you know, in my mind, and I've told several people here, that in large part, it's a reactive thing, you know? Whatever the next biennium, biennium is, that's what we're expecting here. So we can never, that PM, I'm not sure if 50 grand is enough. You'd like more, because that's your job, is to like more.
And he did ask for more, but this is what I can make happen. You know, what I heard from you is that you wanted something with a five-year projection of, so you're not always feeling like something's just coming at you. What I really wanted you to see tonight were the top items for the next five years that we are for sure going to put as a priority. I also wanted you to hear that I built in an emergency fund, so there's no more trying to trade things off when something happens. I feel that the two things I heard you ask me to do, I feel like I tried to do in this, this is not set in stone, these are today's prices, all of those things. I was trying to accomplish what I heard you ask me to do. I can do it.
I think you're doing just fine.
Yep.
That's true, but as a board, we need to make a decision somewhere down the road.
And you know, I, I love that.
Do we say, look, we need to tighten the belt a little more some way, somehow, and lend that off to you and your expertise from there? Because ours is fiscal management, and we balancing the budget, and if we see something happening here, it's like, look, we're overextending. How are we going to make, how are we going to make that happen?
And we just did reduce $88,000 in curriculum.
Understood, understood. I don't mean anything, but I'm just saying, do we need to do more going forward? Because looking forward, I think we can be finding ourselves back paddling here, trying to catch up, and I just don't know if that's where we want to be.
And I think what you're looking at is, with reduced enrollment, will, will reduce our number of technology devices, which will reduce expenditures a little bit there if we have to do some cutbacks. But the one thing that will remain consistent is the envelope of the buildings and the facilities to maintain. That will continually rise, so we will see more of a, a change that way versus, so at least less devices the next time around, because we have less students. That's, that makes common sense. But yeah, I think that's kind of what you're maybe alluding to. I, I would just like, I'd be interested to see what the furthest out projection you could go, and I understand the finances, but again, to me, the biennium is, is the same as students. We don't know what's going to come down for students in four years, but we do know that unless we close a building, our costs are going to continue the same way. So what would it look like to go out and look at all the things? I heard somewhere softball fields will have to be addressed sometime.
We could do, we've got eight years. I didn't put it on here. Remember, by closing West Dido, all of the money that was going out there is now built into this budget. So those savings are how I was able to make that emergency savings account. So I'm glad you mentioned that. The CCC at this point, we still very much need, and, you know, at least eight years out. We can do that. I know that Jerry, Dave, the facility committee, we've talked about many more items. If nothing more, I could follow up and bring you all the items that have been talked about, if you'd like that too. But I can do eight years pretty easily. It's just five are a little more realistic.
I'm just waiting for the big ones to hit again, because it's going to be eight years down the road, 10 years down the road. Everything will be older.
Okay.
And as those things come back up, because right now, we're in a nice spot. Everything's new. Taking care of the stuff, but it always changes.
Well, thank you for everything.
Yeah, you bet. I don't think it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh, for the numbers.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, reports and communication. You have anything else for us to sue?
I just want to celebrate something tonight. Here's a picture kind of representing what happened this whole last week. We had 400 kids in our building and out in our community doing amazing things. I mean, I have the website if you'd like to go see the before and after. Enough where some ladies came in and were crying in my office. They didn't have a wheelchair ramp. There were some of them that hadn't had their house painted in 30 years. There was a lot of tears and a lot of joy. And these kids from all over the country got to come to Cannon Falls and do some really great things in our town, and I'm very, very proud, and I'm going to hang this in my office, because it was this community and this school coming together. And you said yes when I asked you to please use this building. And I just, I can't express enough what this did to our community. And even the downtown business people were like, they were all over, and they bought everything local, food, lumber, everything was purchased from something local, if they could make that happen. And there was a house done over at Red Wing as well, so I'm just really proud of this. I don't really have a report tonight. I just, I think that picture just really represents everything I believe in and why we live in a town like this, is that we, we come together when we need to, to do those things. I'm just really proud of it, so. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Board committee reports. Don't meet much during the summertime, but does anybody have anything from their respective committees they'd like to share?
Well, I should mention the F Foundation is having a golf tournament July 17th, so if you're interested in that, maybe still be able to sign up for that.
Get your foursome signed up. It'll be fun.
Anyone else? Public input. We talked at the last meeting about knowing what everybody was going to be here for and the probability that we can't listen to everyone, because some of these issues are going to be somewhat redundant in nature. So we're asking for members who wish to speak. Hopefully you've had some designation there. So does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss with the board at this time?
Yep. You'll be told a little out of me.
Stand over this side, so he can...
Stand over? Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
I just want to show support. I want everyone to stand up that is here, and this is why I'm talking for. So if you guys are here to support the tennis, that's why we're here. Thank you. If they need to stand the whole time, but that'd be great. So, so yeah, so obviously, Paul Norris, I had tennis coach. I've been here for 22 years. I'm here on behalf of the tennis team, of course, but I'm also here on behalf of many of, on behalf of many community members that have reached out to me as well, and for myself as a community member that plays tennis. I think the one thing to point out is that we have a great group here, but it's also June 26th. There's a lot of people on summer vacations, a lot of people at camps, there's a dance, something going on that took some people. And there's middle school softball, so there's people that wish they could be here, but they have those commitments, that they're not here right now. A lot of this might be review, but I just think needs to come out, just to make us feel good, that we know that the board understands something, maybe some clarification. But the first thing I want to start out with is talking about fundraising. I want to make sure that the board knows that we do have an account with the school that has about $1,000 in it. So tennis does have money. That money is used for, like all other sports, for uniforms, mostly, I think, but any extra equipment that you may need that doesn't cover it in your budget. If you go to the state, it's something that helps you cover hotels, meals, getting practice courts that we needed. So we have money in our budget, and I think that was maybe in this concept that we, that the board didn't know, that tennis just doesn't have money to just take. We do. We have money that we need, and if we need something, we do. We just didn't know that we needed to fundraise for facilities. I think that that's something that's brand-new to any sport in our school, that nobody's ever been asked to fundraise for facility use. So why would we if we didn't need to? So if you're asking us to do that, we've never said that we would never do that. We are happy to do that if that's what's needed. We've had many talks. We have parents that are willing to start booster clubs. We've heard from many people in the community about possibility of donating money. I know that we can't take any right now, but the talk's been there. So it's open. So we're, we're very willing to do fundraising. Let's ask the best. The next thing I want to kind of talk about is the $10,000 per year for tennis that has kind of been out there. I think that, we talked about that in the facility meeting, and I thought it never really got back to the board. And I just, for me, it seems not totally true. If you look at tennis, it's hard to project how much tennis is going to cost, so if you get a bid for $70,000 and last seven years, $10,000 a year. But I think if you go back to '07, when the tennis courts were resurfaced, I don't know what that bid was, but I'm guessing it was much lower than $70,000. And it's now been 10 years, so if you divide that out by year, it's much lower than $10,000 per year to play tennis. So I, I don't know that that's an accurate statement. And we don't know how long the tennis courts are going to. What if they last 10 years this time? That's less than $10,000 a year. So at the facility meeting, I also asked to compare us to other sports. And if you break it all down, I don't believe that tennis is far off, or is probably going to be at the lower end of per money per year of what it would be. And Jake brought up at both the discussion meeting and the facility meeting about track is a similar thing that's going to be coming up, and if you break that down, we're right there with track. So I just, how we're pointing out that tennis is that number, I just don't know how we come up with that number. And so I, I'd like it to be broken down better if that's what we're going to do. Next thing. I lost track here. The other thing that I want to talk about is about the number 22 seems to be the big number about participation. I think that that's an accurate number. If you look at our last year, we had 22 people, so it's accurate. I will say, however, if you look further back, our numbers have always been in the 30s and 40s. In the last four to five years, our numbers have decreased, which has been the case in almost every sport at our school. And I'm not, I want to make sure that everyone knows this, I'm not bashing any other sport, but when you add another sport to your season, which happened, participants are going to change, and numbers are probably going to go down. I think that's logical. And the thing that we're seeing is that we're starting to build that up. It's just, it takes an adjustment period for that to happen. One of our goals this year in our offseason was to get everybody to get more people to play tennis. And from hockey to the girls, it sounds like we have several new players that will be playing next year. Our middle school numbers are starting to go up already. So it just is an adjustment period. So you're taking the number 22 based on one year, which is the lowest number it's been in the 22 years that I coached. And so if you could average that out some way, it's just, it seems logical to me. The other thing is about the warranty, the warranty of the tennis courts. The tennis courts are warranted. I know an email went out on Thursday morning from Jake. I talked to the guy on Wednesday to make sure that he made that understood, that there is a warranty for the tennis courts. It is a one-year warranty, which is standard. That was my question for him, is what is the standard? I have no idea. He said that is one year. He also went into saying that he felt so good about what he could do to our courts that he, I don't know, possibly could do a four-year warranty. I don't know what that discussion entails, but he felt very good about what he could do to our tennis courts. I sent an email yesterday to the board about what I got, the findings that he found about our courts. And I thought that was very interesting, that he thought the people that did it prior did a poor job of it. And that's why you need to sandblast it this year. And I think that's why the number is higher this year. Normally you don't have to sandblast a court. So the next time, hopefully if it's maintained correctly, it can just be resurfaced. You don't have to spend that money on the sandblasting part. He did not think it was a structural problem, which seems to be a big discussion, is it or isn't it? But he's a professional that could have charged us the restructuring fee. And he also could have charged us each post, but he only picked out the post that he felt needed to be fixed. So he could have made extra money if he wanted to, but he didn't. So I feel that he was an honest person that's giving us an honest bid. So I feel good about the person that you have picked. Another question that I have heard come up has to do with where money is coming from for the tennis courts. And you can discuss this probably more, and I know you all have a discussion period, but we're from the facility account budget. And we would not be taking money out of a curriculum budget. And you guys can elaborate on that. But I think that's something that people have talked to, I've heard of, has come up, that we're doing this for the tennis courts and it's coming out of the curriculum. Well, same as there's a transportation budget, we can't take money out of transportation for the facilities. Same thing is true for curriculum. And if I'm wrong, please elaborate during your discussion. You can talk about that, I believe. We did go to the city. The city was willing to take any money. I think that the important thing that came with that is there, it's still an open conversation with the city. They didn't close it. If you want to go back to the city, they said come back and it's possible that they could do more. I would hope that at this point, that this isn't the last conversation, that maybe we could have them maybe budget and maybe in seven years, it won't be a big surprise that we go to them and they could have something saved up to help continue the maintenance of what is city and school courts. So hopefully that's not the last conversation. The last thing, one of the last things I want to talk about is just the lack of communication that I think that I have felt as the head coach. I know that it's been talked, that the Facility Committee has been talking for two years about tennis. And it's not uncommon for me not to hear anything from the Facility Committee. So that's, that's fine. But when there's a problem, and it seems like we can say that this is a problem, we're all here on a summer day, that I would be notified, I guess, that I would be asked to maybe come to a facility meeting, that you're, we're talking tennis, there is issues. For two years, we've been talking about maybe doing fundraising. Well, I didn't know about that until May. If we could have started fundraising two years ago, a year ago, a month ago, we maybe have money right now to show you for tennis. But that, there's just this lack of communication there, I felt that this could have been done sooner. And then we did ask to come to a facility meetings and to be notified about facility meetings. And we went to the July, June 1st facility meeting. And then we find out to our surprise, there was another facility meeting on Monday, which none of us were notified about to come to. So it's a little frustrating when stuff like that happens where we're, and I know it was probably publicly notified and everything was there, but when we're asked to be involved and wondering why we're not more involved, and then a meeting is held and we're not even included, it's frustrating for us. Just in closing, I'd like the board to just, all of you have had kids that have played sports. Some of you still have kids in our school. Imagine if it's their senior year, we have a big group of seniors coming up, and you're told that you don't have a facility to play on. And so you spent six years since 7th grade, going to camps, doing lessons, playing USDA or AAU ball, whatever your kids did. And then the school doesn't provide a facility to play on, and you're going to be all the way matches and you have no place to practice. And if that was you, I can imagine that you would be in these seats, like these parents are, wondering what's going on as well. And so that's our question is right now. And we're hoping and we're asking for the board to consider option three, to resurface. It seems like an option that's there, that is a maintenance thing, that possibly could have been done a few years ago, that maybe would have lowered that number already from 70 down. But that's what we're asking and we're hoping that you will support that. We know that we have bothered you a lot in the last couple of weeks, so we thank you for your time and consideration. And if you have any questions or any discussion, we would love to answer any of them. So thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Kayla.
Could you come over? They're putting you in the spot, but that's okay.
My name is Kayla Jackson. Molly Roloff and myself are captains of the Cannon Falls varsity tennis teams coming season. My teammates and I support the resurfacing of the tennis courts this coming season. We also promote the sport of tennis itself. It's a lifelong sport that builds character traits like honesty, loyalty, and respectfulness. We look to have 25 to 30 players this coming year. Our tennis team is very active in tennis, in and out of the season, but we all know that academics come first. Our team has been awarded gold and silver awards from the Minnesota State High School League for our achievements and academics. We spend many hours devoted to our schoolwork after practices and matches. With limited number of courts, our team will have to adjust time for middle school and high school practices. In these practices, we will not be able to play competitive matches to enhance our skills due to the current court service. The travel time to get to and from all the way matches can range from one to two hours. This means that we will more than likely miss our seventh hour. We will have many late nights that our studying will be affected. This could reflect in our academics. Bama Tennis has made many achievements at sections. We have been awarded runner-up at sections for a total of six years and a total of three years at regions. Our team has accomplished a conference finish of second place for a total of 15 years. In their last year, we were ranked as high as sixth in the state. We are proud of these accomplishments and we would like to keep them going. In order to do this, you'll need space to expand our skills. Of course, our goal remains to lead the world. Playing and practicing on our home course next year would maintain our academic status and advance our skills. For these reasons, we would like you to vote yes on this issue of resurfacing the tennis courts for this coming season. Thank you for your time you put into this matter. We appreciate it.
We're going to limit the number. Does anyone else want to speak? Otherwise, we'll be here all day with everyone. But does anyone else want to speak to this?
My name's Dustin Anderson. I have a junior high daughter and an elementary daughter. I guess my issue with the tennis program this year being all the way matches would be the late nights. The 11 and 12-year-olds getting home at 10 and 11 o'clock at night from one owner, Byron, or wherever the matches take place. So having facilities here in town to, you know, obviously, hold home matches is pretty key. As far as, I guess my, my big portion of why I was asked to speak was as far as fundraising goes. I spent a number of years as the gambling manager for the fire department. Talked to them and they're on board with 2,500 bucks as of today and potentially more. There's a lot of other, you know, the Lions, the VFW, a lot of other places that, you know, even as far as getting a gambling license, you know, there's a limited amount of space in town. And to cut into the fire department or VFW, I mean, they're somewhat limited with the number of participants, but they certainly have some options to drum up some money. I think it'd be reasonable to have them contribute a fair share of the cost to lessen the blow. And I'd certainly be willing to help out with doing some of that legwork and seeing where we can, where we can get as far as a number.
Anyone else we can squeeze in one more? Anyone else wish to speak?
Hey.
We'll close the public.
Oh, we got one.
Dan, you were looking it up.
Three to five.
All right. I'm Dan Brewer. I have a daughter, Abby. She's going in 8th grade. She plays tennis. And I've learned a lot more about tennis in the last three weeks than I've ever had. Tennis has been a blessing for our family. I've never played tennis until Abby started playing tennis. And we do it as a family. And there's four of us and we're out there and playing together. And over the years, I've seen the cracks, you know, and just like, okay, let's play right over it because they're going to fix them. They're going to fix them. And you know, after that, the three years, it didn't get done, you know? And, and to hear, I give you a passion about these guys from Sedell and Georgetown and the parents and the community members and the powers that be willing to help out with this. It takes a community, like Beth said, reference the project, the housing, and coming together and fixing something. We need that, you know? So I'm asking for your vote to resurface this project. You know, not too long ago, you asked for help with the budget and did a referendum. And the community came together and passed it. So right now, we're asking you to help us out with the field. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. We will close the public input and move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion unless for some reason a board member wants to discuss any item singularly, we can remove it for separate action. If you have a chance to look at the items under the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Rob. Second by Keaton. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, full business, discussion, update tennis court. There was some logic to the, to the term discussion. But I would think at this point in time, after an hour of discussion, that we can move this to an action item. But in order to do that, we need a motion and a second to turn it in there.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
There is a motion by Kurt and a second by Brenda. Other discussion. All in favor of turning this into an action item for vote this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Okay. One of the points that Paul made was being asked to fundraise. And it, it wasn't necessarily something that we've never done before. But under the time constraints that we presented to you in the past, either we get some outside help here or that would delay our process. So the fundraising thing was more of a recommendation and a can you help us out kind of thing, because otherwise it gets delayed until our, until our next year. So there was some logic behind that. I, I think that when, when Dave, as the public, as our operations guy, he has done some work on there in the past. We've, I think last year or a year and a half ago, took down that what I consider decorative block because it was causing the tennis courts long-term problems. So we haven't not addressed the courts, but maybe we haven't addressed them as quickly as we could have. And having said that, there's just a lot of other items that, that happen. So I understand all of your passion for this because it's an emotional issue for you. We're torn between having it be that emotionally issue for us and the objectivity of where we put our money. And we don't, we certainly don't take it lightly. There are several of you that we have all seen and talked to in the last 10 days. So our current situation, as I read it, is we earmarked some money from the Wastito, 45 grand. And earmarking means that's our intention to put it there. It's, for lack of a better term, a light commitment. We always have other things that enter in. The compressor was one thing, cost us 20K that we didn't bank on. But those are things that happen in our life and it's my, it's my fear that if we wouldn't proceed with tennis resurfacing now, that 45 will be gone for the next crisis that we face. So at this point in time, we have 40, $45,000. We have the Fireman's Benevolent Group, 2,500, and the city at 7,500. Math wasn't my strong suit, but we're better than 75 to 80% of where we need to be to get this finished. I have some personal apprehensions about getting this passed and having our, our community and you folks say, well, this is completed now. Let's move forward to something else. Whether or not we pass this, we'll still need those funds. And so I hope that you're as enthusiastic about going out and assisting us if we get this thing passed. So I, I, I would pass this on. Anyone else wish to speak to it?
I guess, I talked to several of you this week and, and I understand, like as a parent, I know with my kids, my kids are in sports. I understand everything you guys are saying. I know I heard something about the late nights. I guess we don't have any place for cross-country here. So they do all of their, they do all of their matches or meets away. And my son was in that last year too. And it is, it is a difficult thing with homework and everything. I understand that. And I just want to say that whatever, I, I just hope that we can come to some sort of an agreement. But I don't know, I guess it's my understanding that the funds are not here. So how do we, how, how, I guess what I have a question for the board is how does this, how does this happen? Like how do you, how do you even get option three to work if the money's not here?
Well, most of the money is...
Right, 80%. So do you, are you able to reserve?
We would have to postpone resurfacing. The, the next item on, that you saw earlier tonight is resurfacing at the parking lot.
Okay.
You would have to dig into that.
So that would be the only option? Would be digging into that to make it?
It'd have to come out of facilities.
It has to come out of somewhere. Okay.
And just so you guys understand, I know you're new, so I'm going to clarify something.
Yeah.
Paul said transportation, curriculum, facilities, that is all one account. That is called Fund One. So just, just, it's hard to understand. I know you're new.
Yeah, I'm learning it.
It really is, it is taking from curriculum. It is taking from transportation. These decisions are really hard for these six board members, but it is one account. So when people get angry that you take it from one or another, they're not separate. It really is called Fund One. The only difference would be, you know, like Jake's account is Fund Nine. That's a little bit different in community and those type of things. Food service is a little different as well, kind of. So those, I just wanted you to clarify. So you understood that.
Thank you.
If we're short, the amount that we're short, and it's like 15K, right?
It's like 20 right now.
Okay, that's at 75. Our bid was...
I think it's, I'd like to know what the numbers are. I'm looking at the bids and I see 68.6, 69.9, and 248.8.
The, the bid that the Facility Committee explicitly, I thought I had that up to you. I'm sorry.
I've got, I print the copies.
Okay.
But I think adding it up, it came to 68.6, unless there's something I don't have on that. That's what I'm asking.
Is that the right one?
Yeah.
No, there's another one.
Lee Sports Structure?
Yes. The one from Lee?
The one from Lee Sports?
For 52, then 11 and 51. Is that the one? Three numbers on it?
You're not looking at me, are you?
No.
Because I've never got this yet myself.
Was my math is wrong.
When we got sent to us on, that's posted for 523 of 17, shows like Rob, just beneath 70 grand.
All right. So I guess my first question is, what, what number are we looking at? We've got three bids to pick from, honestly. I mean, 248, that's crazy, 69.9, and 68.6. Are we looking at 70? Are we looking at 75?
Is that the one with the crack?
The thing that we looked at, that we saw online? The armor.
That's the armor.
That's the Lee. This is the only one that, after, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the only one that we're considering?
That's the only one that we're considering?
Because that one, the armor.
Right. That's the one that we saw the video, but I mean, we presented three bids.
Right.
The other two will not. They are, they can't do it this summer. So we really, unless you want to hold off, you could wait with them, but they won't do it this summer. They're already booked on it.
My feeling is we certainly can't afford the complete remodel.
Oh, great. So Lee Sports would only need to.
Right. My feeling is, is a couple of things. One is Title IX. We need to be in compliance with Title IX. If we do something with tennis, it's going to be a slow situation.
It's not a record. You don't have boys tennis.
Okay.
I was told that Jake was told on the word.
It is, yes. Overall numbers, we have overall enough.
So it's not an issue? Okay. Well, either, either way, I think it's been long overdue for tennis. I, I don't, I know we're, we're struggling a little bit with monies for the parking lot and I hate to see that go a little longer, but I think we can, as a board, get together and maybe have a special meeting to talk about our finances going forward here. They've been sitting here waiting for something to happen for several years, more than several years, I think. And certain things have happened. And they bumped out of place for other things, such as soccer fields. And they're still sitting here waiting. I think as a board, we've decided to... We brought it up several times, and we've also put it on the back burner too. So, I don't think that they should have to suffer for some things that have taken place. And it wasn't good or bad, whether it worked out or not, with some things we had to do. But I think their time has come. And I think if the numbers continue to grow again, that's wonderful. We don't know where it's going to be maybe seven years from now. We just don't know, but it's a good time to look at it. I think if we've got a warranty there for four years, and if it's going to extend beyond that, possibly the quality or the condition of the courts, now we're looking at seven, maybe 10 years. That's a lot of time. I think it's an efficient amount of time to give us an idea of where we're going with the sport and where it might look like down the road.
I watched the video about the armor system, and that had very good reviews. And it lasts an average of eight years, they said. And I think that would be a really good way to go. I mean, the courts are long overdue, as you commented on. And that's a... We have a big investment in those tennis courts that we made, the school and the community and the city. And we need to maintain that, and they need to be safe and playable and for the team, for the students. And we can grow the team if we have facility. If we don't have facility, then it will fall off. We'll lose numbers if we don't maintain the facility.
Can I piggyback on that too, Brenda? I think Dan had a good... You know, the community has given to us with the referendum. You know, we can give back a little bit more, hopefully. And maybe we can come together as a community and build upon it as well and get some more funding that way, too.
You know, folks, we could probably make a motion and a second, continue discussion on this.
Well, I'm just not sure we're motioning, because...
We can always turn it down.
Well, I'm just looking at the dollar. I asked a simple question, what are we looking at for dollars? And I haven't heard an answer yet. Are we looking at 68.6? We looking at 70, we looking at 75?
You gotta talk to Dave.
I think that should be part of the motion, is what are we really making a motion for? What's the dollars?
The bid Lee Sports surfacing is what Jake sent me this morning. This is the bid for the armor. So, Jake, although he's not here tonight, this is what he sent me as the final bid.
Was he able to get the four-year in writing?
Well, it's a one-year, and he's...
I'd ask him that.
Hers email, "We want to more for the industry standard one-year, but confident we'll get a couple more resurfacing second with some maintenance in between."
I had emailed him after that one.
Okay, I didn't.
Yeah, she asked him if he could get that in writing.
Well, typically, when we make a motion, we either cap or go over the dollar amount that we're voting upon, don't we?
We've done the not to exceed in the past as well.
In the motion, though.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm still asking.
That's why the 75 is there. That's what we were told to... It won't go over that, for sure. So, that's what the number we...
Oh, so we don't have like a...
You have this in front of you.
Yeah.
But believe me, there's always something that can happen.
Okay. So, that's just a estimate?
They're all...
They're all we got.
I made a motion that we approve the resurfacing not to exceed 75,000 and using 45,000 earmarked with other donations from the city and the fire department. I don't know how much this needs to be in the motion, but...
It's a lot of motion.
What's fundraising for the remaining amount? Borrowing from facilities in the meantime, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if we can commit this group to fundraising, but it would be, you know, certainly a hope that we can get them to step up. Almost everybody that we've spoken to said money will help as best we can on this. So, it's not really a commitment so much as, yeah, we're going to do our part. We understand the dilemma here. So, Brenda made a motion at not to exceed 75? And with everything else, is there a second? We can continue the discussion after the second.
One second.
Second by Kurt. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor to refurbish, repair, whatever we're going to do with the bid at the time. More discussion.
Tennis is a sport. Going? I mean, I guess my question is really from the district, it's commitment. Numbers might be low, they may stay low. You know, crystal ball, I don't know. Are we committing? If we're going to commit the money to the sport, we're going to commit to keeping the sport, definitely, so that we're not spending money on something we're not going to abandon in three years.
I feel like you're asking me. And I just went through the facility budget. And basically, what I heard was tighten things down. Don't spend anymore. We've got less students. That's what I was just told. So, it feels as if you're asking me a question. I'm telling you, it's really, really tight.
I know.
Money's really tight. I don't know how to answer your question. I feel like you're asking me, what will it look like in seven years? Will we have tennis? But I was just... We just had the conversation about tightening things down. I don't know the answer.
To me, that's part of the tightening, how will it look as we tighten? If tennis is the first sport that we look at to tighten by eliminating, then this would be wasted money. If tennis, you say, you know, we're going to look at a lot of other things before we get to this one, and I have no idea how that would look. I have no idea. That's why I'm asking is, okay... And I know you can't promise that it'll be safe. You know, there's no guarantees anything can be safe from anything. But I guess my question is, because it has been questioned with the numbers, that they are low right now, are we committing as a district then to say, "We're going to keep that sport around because we just put 70 grand into it"?
If this was solely about the girls' tennis team, then there's some logic to it. But I think it's much more... For me, it's always been much more community-based. It's a commitment. We, like Dan said, like Kurt said, it's the community here. And good logic, but we can't look into that crystal ball. I remember in a past life, when we were down to six or eight kids running cross-country. That was very close to getting locked off a number of years ago. But for one reason or another, we didn't do it at that time. And now it's quite a successful sport for us, and it's very active. We have to understand that we were told last year by Jake that seven through 12, the conference is down with every sport, say one or two. Each school has less kids participating. Just kind of the nature and the cycle of things. So, just from a tennis team perspective, I share what you're saying, but this is much more broad than that, I think. It's for the community. And we've talked about it. I know you're doing a devil's advocate thing for us, Melba.
And I do see what you're asking me. I wish I knew. I wish I knew all of these answers. I just know that things are tight, but that doesn't mean you automatically cut a sport. I know most of the girls in this room that participate. There are some of our 4.0 kids. There are ones working after school. They're the ones tutoring. They're in NHS. They are role models to my own daughter. They are role models to my son. I would ask any girl in this room to babysit my own children when they were younger. So, you're asking such a hard question because I don't know what the numbers are going to look like. I don't know what right sizing is going to look like. What I do know is that we have 66 kids in the kindergarten. We have 72 in first grade. And if that trend continues, I think down the road, some things are either going to have to join together. We're going to have to look at that. I think we're going to have to get really creative, like Cannon Falls is known for. We've always come out of financial devastation looking good because we get creative. And I think those things can happen. What's unfortunate is we don't have anyone really near us that plays tennis. Red Wing would not ever want us because it puts them in a different class and all those kinds of... That sounds bad. They would want us, but the numbers, it changes their positions and things like that.
And I'm not questioning the students in any way, shape, or form. This is more of a district question, how do we support the play?
It's going to be difficult to do. But remember, our physical education departments use it. You know, there are other uses for the courts, not just tennis as well.
There are summer camps, maybe movie members.
Well, that's kind of where I have an issue. Is it obviously need to be fixed? Yep, it is. I'm not for taking from another maintenance piece to fix... That needs fixing, to fix another piece that needs repair. The community uses that, I would say, second to the fieldhouse. In my opinion, the city should be confident more than the 7,500 blocks. That's my whole opinion. Because it is... When those courts are in good condition, it was used at 6 o'clock in the morning till 10 o'clock every night. You could drive by any night. That's my opinion. I think it needs a pass, but I don't see where the... I just haven't figured out how we're going to get to the dollar amount to pay for it without taking it from something else that is in major need of repair. That's where I sit on it.
And that's where I'm looking at too. Just with like... I had checked out how bad the parking lots really were. I wasn't sure. You know, when you're driving on them, you don't see it. When you're walking on them, you do. And so, you know, because I don't pay attention as much when I'm driving. And there may not be big holes, but there's going to be. So, I guess I'm just a little concerned about taking it from that, if that's the only place we can take it from, taking it from that. But I want to see tennis succeed and, you know, grow. So, I've been really, believe me, I think, you know, my wheels have been turning to try and find an alternative way of trying to come up with that extra money.
The unfortunate part is it's been taken from them for so long.
Absolutely. And I do agree, I agree with something that Coach said about wishing he was told, you know, like two years ago, if we'd have started this fundraising two years ago, we'd have it. And that, I feel like that's not fair. So, I guess it's a big struggle for me.
Sure.
But that's where I'm at too, is how do you take from something else that needs just as dire of repair to repair some... Yeah, and I agree. I feel like there's no good... There's no good answer.
I don't know. We've never earmarked money to repair those surfaces in the past that we then we took away, correct? This is the first time we've allocated. And the 45, the 45,000 was allocated because when this originally started with Dave and Jake two years ago...
That's how much it would have cost.
Forty-five, and that's where the numbers originally came from. But they come from the tennis people.
Right.
It came from the facilities within.
Sure.
So, and I know there's misconception in the public that they took 20,000 off that to fix the compressor, which is not true at all.
Okay, so the 45 was earmarked from the beginning?
It was earmarked at 45. That 20,000 for the compressor never came from the tennis courts at all.
That was just the total together was what was the Wastito?
Right.
Okay.
When did... Paul, when did you start coming to the school to talk? Because I don't know when a court looks bad.
Four years ago. I started talking to Jake. Jake is my boss. And every really caring knows as well. Jake says it's going to get done. That's the answer we got. So, why would I pursue that more?
Sure, right, sure.
That's the only answer I got.
Right, okay.
And I know it was discussed at meetings, but it was like you said with everyone else.
Can we wait?
Right.
Right, right.
It'll last another year. And other things I put in front of it. So, I never say it was earmarked or cut. I just have a name for this.
It's hard to find the right word because it's always been on the priority list.
It's been discussed.
It's been discussed, and then we get to move through it.
That's as far as it goes.
We have to assume that with the enthusiasm that we all felt from the tennis community and the fact that there were statements made like, "We'll find that money, we'll assist you in getting that money." Anything we take out of that resurfacing of our parking lots should be fulfilled and replenished.
When is the... When are the parking lots scheduled to be resurfaced? Like, do we have a timeline or...
I haven't given Dave the go-ahead to do it.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if it was like something that you were... That was planned or in the works.
Are you talking like how many years before you should be doing it?
No, I'm talking about like, is it in the plan? Like, the summer to get it done, you know, before school starts or was it...
We'd like to do it... It's nice if you can do it the same time as the city because a lot of times you can work with them. Some of the companies come at the same time.
Okay.
If we have to close down a road so that people are... Sure, you know, it works well if Dave can work with the city on that. So, we'll be able to handle it, can figure it out.
Just like anything else, even resurfacing, it's a seasonal thing. And everyone wants it done this summer.
Okay. Does that mean it'll for sure get done this summer? If you wanted it, like, are you... Are we too late for that? Like, because we didn't give you the go-ahead, or we...
They call me every day.
Okay, okay.
They want to be here.
Okay, okay.
They want an answer for a month, you know, at least.
I just didn't know how that worked and...
We were waiting for...
Waiting for this, okay, okay.
Well, it's unfortunate it had to be done by crisis because it should have been planned for, just the way we're planning ahead for when we have to repay the tracks. We're not asking the track company to help pay for that. It should have been in the planning, it should have been dealt with sooner than... At the stage that's now, in my opinion.
So, how did the playground thing come about?
The resurfacing.
Of the roads?
No, the tennis courts, it needed to be done two years ago, three years ago.
So, why was it given to Mr. Bell that they needed to... They needed to fundraise for the playground? If that was unstable?
It didn't make that five-year, top five-year...
Okay, but it would have been in the same... It would have been in that same budget, correct? Like this is? Okay. So, he didn't have to wait for it to become on a five-year? He had to fundraise it?
Or he could have waited the...
Or he could have waited the five years?
Okay, staying on topic. We have a motion, a second on the floor to refurbish the tennis courts at not more than 75K. We can close discussion, we've had a lot of it. So, let's do a roll call vote on this, please. A yes would mean that you're in favor of fixing our courts. Brenda, could you recite them? You're the roll call person.
Okay. Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Nope.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes? Katie?
No.
Rob?
Yes.
That passes by a 4-2 vote with Katie and Jerry voting in the negative and the rest of us voting yes. Okay, moving on. Consideration to approve the fundraising events for the tennis court improvements.
Well, just as any fundraiser, we typically approve those in September. We've had some great conversation, and great people have come to my office and are asking permission to go ahead and fundraise.
I know that there's been some groups that have stepped forward and at least moderately showed some interest and assistance.
We actually, they've already written the checks, the fire department.
I think more than that, more than the fire department. So, is the first place to go to see if they're willing to commit? Or is the first place to go to start fundraising in a different direction like we do 38 times a year with others?
Quick question on this, because it seems a little different. If someone offers you money, is that fundraising?
It's a donation. It's a donation.
Okay, so, but it wouldn't be considered a part of this? And with the fire department, it almost sounds like it's a donation, not a, so would that be considered in the same bucket? Are we talking fundraising on this agenda to something where we're gonna go out and start to solicit?
That's, that's my question. We've had, we, I, I've heard, I guess, that there's two or three other entities out there that show some strong interest. And one of the firemen said, you know, it's a possibility we could squeeze more out. So I don't know if I consider that fundraising. I consider selling pies fundraising, and that's.
It would be a donation. It's just like not, anything else, like the donations you see on the list tonight. If they donate it, they want it towards the biology department. You can donate in a specific area. Um, people might donate books to a classroom for their student library. You can, you can donate in a specific area.
So what would you do to approve?
Yeah, this just seems kind of open-ended, like who would be doing fundraising, what kind of, I don't know.
Yeah, we are wanting to fundraise. Um, we have definitely, we just didn't want to get into the trap where you said that you can't bring money in and then turn it back. So as soon as you give us the go-ahead, we know people to contact. And it would be more of people donating right now. We're not gonna sell pies. If it gets to that, if it gets to that, we'll go to Rob. But if it gets to that point, we can definitely maybe request that, that we need to sell something. But I think right now, if we can, there's so many community members that we can contact that I think will help, and I think that's maybe the start.
Would there be any, would there be anything wrong with us delaying the fundraising portion of this, knowing that our idea on fundraising is more like?
If you're okay with that, and you're not gonna turn your money away when we get it, we're fine.
Yeah, give them permission.
Do we need to give them permission to seek donations?
Do we need to?
That's my question.
Absolutely. We do, okay.
So it is the same bucket?
But this is the tennis team.
That was my question, yeah.
Who are we, who is this? For the team, or?
Uh, you know, the, the money would be used to reimburse that facility.
No, I mean, who's, who are we giving?
Who are we going to do this? The tennis.
Because there's no booster club for it?
Right, okay.
It's just that clear.
Are, are you guys gonna?
We have talked about it a lot. We talked about it three years ago. It just, you know, we need to talk to the other boosters. We know that there's tax and tax things that need to be done. There's like insurance that needs to be done. So we know that there's a lot of overhead too for that. So again, this is new for us to raise money for facilities, so it's all a new process as well. So yes, we'd love to have the tennis boosters in our, in our community.
Okay.
Can I ask this question? And I know we're talking about fundraising for the facilities. So they've got a thousand dollars. Somehow it's in their account. So they go and they fundraise, and they raise ten thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars. Is it only for facilities, or does it go into the tennis boosters? Is it going to an earmarked area for them only? Does it get put into facilities as a?
No. It, that's a really great question. It's good for everyone at this table to understand that. It would go into a tennis activity account. Um, that's the only way the auditors will allow it. Uh, here's the example of FFA. When they go out and sell fruit, that goes into a student activity account. That means the student, as well as the advisor, which would be Paul in this case, would have to sign that off. Goes to Tim, he then has to sign off, then it goes to me for approval. Uh, then the student activity account would make a donation to the school towards the tennis courts improvement project. But, um, the only way you can get through the auditors, they can't just, you know, they can't just do it anyway. And, and I think Paul understands the main procedures on that, that it would go into a student activity account. And then typically the captains, like Taylor, would be asked to sign off on that as well, because it is their, their fundraising. And you do that so that, you know, coaches don't get brand-new uniforms every year or something like that. Josh, am I missing anything?
Not really. It's all good.
See, it's all good, auditors.
Yeah, they always get productional things. Once it comes to the school, it could go right to the general fund, certainly, but it would go to student activity account to be remartened tennis. It becomes tennis activity, and it has to be signed off by the students. It's a student activity use. Uh, and that's really so that as coaches, we can't, you know, deck ourselves up with stuff or pay for certain things that aren't for the students. They earn the funds for tennis, it would go towards tennis and have to be approved by, usually you would have a treasurer sign off from your booth, but a team member is able to sign off for them, for, for tennis. Also, the assumption we made that those funds would come into student activity account, they would like to check over to the school district to pay for whatever portion that would be of the tennis courts for servicing.
It really isn't complicated. It's just you need to follow all those procedures. So Taylor, you should sharpen up your pen and make sure you know how to make your statement.
Hey, my little, I have a question about this. So if, if they're collecting donations from somebody, if they come to a business and say, we're looking for a donation, and how I'm understanding this is this project is only gonna go forward if we're able to get the money to do it, even though you're approving it?
Not so.
They approved it. They're going to use money from the resurfacing.
We're gonna borrow money from our parking lot improvement in hopes that enough money is, is.
Basically.
Got, is received that we can replenish that account and get our blacktop and our.
And if the money isn't received, the blacktop will just suffer?
Yes.
I'm just saying, if it, because I was just wondering, if a business donated and said, I'll donate, and then you decide not to do the project, would that money go back to the donors? But it's gonna happen if you.
They voted yes on that.
Okay.
But that's where I'm a little bit confused then. So if they go and solicit for donations, that's earmarked for tennis only, and you've taken the money from facilities, so that, that money that they get will stay in tennis? Plus, they get the money from facilities?
Well, you're spending it out of the facility, so it's one in the same. I mean, it's just how.
No, you, you're, they have to pay it back, right?
Are they paying it back to facilities, or does it stay in the tennis?
Go back into facilities.
But that's not what I heard.
Jerry, that's, I mean, that was my concern when we do all of this, is that we're borrowing from an upcoming appraisal.
Right, right.
If it's easier to say it'll go back into Fund One, we can do that too. You know, the, the student activity account can reimburse anything.
What I'm looking at is when tennis starts reimbursing, it's, it's a picking thousand-dollar
shortfall. Whatever we have to do on the general fund is find a way to either borrow fifteen thousand dollars from someplace else to pay for that resurfacing, or when the tennis funds were to start arriving, that amount would reduce to ten, five, seven, hopefully zero at the end of it. But all they're doing is really moving stuff around within the general fund. The choice is gonna have to be made now is, do you wanna find fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to finish the payment resurfacing for the, the parking lot?
But as funds come in, they will replenish.
It would offset them.
Right. It's not a separate account, but it will be in the general.
We have to be somewhat careful about the interaction between board and spectators this evening. So if you had something, Paul had something for us that was a financial concern, but we'd like to keep this here. Um, and we have had discussion items, and we've had a long, a long discussion item last time. So I'm, I know what Jerry's saying here, but it's, uh, wouldn't it be wonderful if it was a net thirty to pay this tennis bill, and we had that money within thirty, then it would be all the moot point. But Josh is saying what we're doing is above board and just fine to do, so. Could we have a motion to either approve or not approve the tennis events?
I'm in motion.
I'll second. Motion by Kurt, seconded by Rob. Any other discussion?
For fundraising or for soliciting donations?
There's a dollar in one.
One in the same.
As far as you're concerned?
Well, as far as I'm concerned, in the past, you reported on specific fundraisers.
Right.
Basketball does tournament work. You know, sells cookie dough. Donation, to me, that's totally different from a fundraiser. We don't usually.
And they're reported differently too.
Correct. We don't approve donations until they come here. I mean, we don't go and say, hey, Josh can go find, play, find, donate for basketball.
I can't turn away a donation, only you can.
Much more difficult than I thought we were gonna.
It is very difficult.
Motion to approve fundraising through donations?
Well, actually, and again, it goes into three categories now. One is donations versus fundraising, but two, Jerry brings up a good point, normally we'll approve a, or, sorry, Josh, a specific type of fundraising. And we're just approving.
All fundraising.
Everything fundraising possible. So we are believing it very wide open at this point. So I don't know if it's approval to start looking and then come to the board with your fundraising ideas.
I think Paul needs to be specific if they're gonna fundraise, what he's.
What kind of fundraising will be allowed?
Because we don't wanna cross with anybody else that does fundraising.
But as far as donations, they're able to go out and seek those donations, and then we approve them.
Any, any.
And the next meeting week, they can bring it, and we can approve them then.
It's under your consent agenda.
That's right, a donation, okay.
And then can I just ask one more question? If, if they're donating, going out and soliciting for donations, does that mean other teams can do the same?
Anyone can ask for a donation. You guys, you can refuse any donation.
Okay, all right. John, go.
I don't, I don't think they're gonna be asking for donations yet, are they? They're just, they've been notified that people are willing to donate.
Yeah.
But now they can acknowledge.
Right.
Right, that, I just wanted to make sure they were, they knew that they could do that with this approval.
Should we change that fundraising to?
I'm.
It's, it's wide open.
Maybe we can just.
Well, it's not wide open because it's specifically for tennis court improvement.
Right, but they could do car wash, they could sell cookies, pies, you name it. We don't let anyone else do that. Or number up. Or do we say a fundraiser or two fundraisers?
Been a long time since we've asked any group to specifically.
Why don't you have them come back with their fundraising idea for July? Uh, this gives them time to get organized. They know we're moving forward. Uh, donations can come in in the meantime, but that would allow them, and they certainly can come and talk to me anytime, so that I get that on the agenda. And then our next meeting is July twenty-fourth. Make sure it's a Monday, make sure I'm right on that. But, uh, July twenty-fourth, I think they could very easily put a, you know, we will be fundraising through GoFundMe, um, you know, something like that. So whatever they decide to do.
But it's way too private, though. I mean, so they could have an event at the Cannavale Fair, but they won't have approval until July.
I think it's, to be honest, guys, anytime you fundraise, it takes at least a month to get organized. This is a really hardworking group, and they're gonna hit the ground running, but they need time to get their thoughts together, get their organization done. That's thirty days with a holiday involved in there. Um, they're, they need time to get organized. I, I think bringing it back on July one for the exact fundraiser would be a good idea. It allows Jake to be here and be a part of that, and.
Just on what your source.
I like, because it does fit in with what we've done in the past.
But in the meantime, you know, if, if donations come in, we'll add that to the consent agenda, and that, and I can keep Paul up to speed on any donations that come in, so that they know kind of where they're at too.
So I'll make a motion to table the fundraising events for the tennis courts, improve for tennis.
Is that amending your motion?
Just tabling it. I don't have to amend anything. I'm just.
What motion?
Why don't you amend your original motion, so they can solicit donations?
Don't we want the fundraising to start right away as soon as possible, though?
I would like, I personally would like to give them the latitude of tennis improvement fundraiser. And if you wanna put fundraiser slash donate, donation events, I really don't care, but I think we should move forward.
Do you have an idea, Paul?
Yeah, can I just say that we're not gonna do a fundraiser, sell anything until we come to the board, because we know that needs to happen. But what we would like to do is possibly put a letter together to send out to people if they wanna donate. And so if you're okay with that, we're okay with that. And then we can come back in July if we decide to do, sell something, or do a car wash, or whatever. We can come to you at that time to get approval for that. So I guess we're looking for approval to at least send a letter out asking for donating chips right now.
I'm gonna withdraw my second, just to make it clean. So you're first without a second, right?
Going backwards here, Rob, and I'm erasing you.
I gotta think about this.
I would like to amend this motion where it would state, approve the fundraising event for donations only for the tennis team. He wants to look for donations.
I'm thinking. It's just the look on my face, I think.
We can expand it later. There's a motion by Kurt to approve the suggestion by Paul, I guess, for a letter for donations only. Would that be correct? Kurt?
Kurt.
I have it written, sorry, consideration to approve a donation solicitation event?
Sounds good.
That would get fundraising out of the terminology.
This has, this has been quite a long process here at once, so we're good with that. There's a motion on the floor.
We got another coach.
Yeah, I know, but we've got a motion in second before we discuss.
Okay.
And then we're gonna quickly move on. Okay, any, any second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, if you have anything, Karen, for the.
Well, I was approached by the VFW, because they have a meeting tomorrow. I was gonna bring some tennis drills and see if they would be willing. I think they have a pull tab gambling fund also. Is it, can I do that? Is that?
I think that's the area that we'll be okay.
Okay, that's, it's just getting me okay, huh?
I can.
I guess as long as they're not.
It's confusing for me, it's confusing for you.
I'm just trying to understand, because.
Yeah, it, it is confusing.
As long as they're not holding any vet, would be the difference.
Right.
I had to think this through.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to, for the continuance of tennis court improvement donation drive, for lack of better statements.
Laurie's got it.
Yeah, Laurie's got it right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Okay, new business. Consideration to post and hire a one-point-oh FTE preschool teacher.
I know you feel like this is deja vu, and you see this every month, and you do. We are down three of our four preschool teachers. Um, so we are looking to post and hire a one-point-oh, another one-point-oh preschool teacher.
Let me ask you a question, Kurt.
Brenda, on the motion?
I'll second.
Kurt, on the second. Other discussion?
What are the numbers?
Oh, very good. Our preschool numbers are crazy high. We need to stay with all four. We were gonna try to go down to three, and we just can't. We've got a lot of students.
All in favor of this hire, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Consideration to approve Laura Rezak as one-point-oh full-time EBD teacher for the seventeen, eighteen year.
You may recognize this name. She's actually worked for the school district as a coach before. Uh, she has three young students in the district, and she currently works for District one ninety-six and has been selected out of a very strong pool, actually, of candidates, and we're very excited to offer the contract to Laura. Outstanding teacher.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie.
That's an LBT.
Emotional behavioral disorder, so she's a special education teacher.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Consideration to approve Shar.
Ogier.
Ogier as a point-five FTE Title I teacher for the upcoming year.
Pretty exciting. We've even got Lori in the room here. Shar is a retired teacher from Red Wing. Not crazy about retirement, wants to come back. Amazingly exciting that we were able to snag this teacher. Is she not gonna be wonderful? Just very, very good. She's already been in, um, and we're really excited to offer her a point-five contract. She'll be job sharing with Lori, who's in the room right now.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Consideration to approve Jamie Besko as one-point-oh FTE fifth-grade teacher for the upcoming year.
You'll also recognize this name. She was one of the teachers that was reduced due to some people coming back from leaves, but we're really excited. After interviewing six candidates, um, she rose to the top very quickly, and we're very excited to offer her a contract back.
Please do. Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kurt.
I'll second. Go ahead, Kate.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kate. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Consideration to approve the resolution approving School District two fifty-two Long-Term Facility Maintenance Ten-Year Plan Expenditure Plan.
Well, both five and six will be resolutions, so Brenda will get ready for that. Uh, these are very standard procedure. Uh, they both, five and six, were created by UNESCO. Uh, one is for the Goodview County District, and one is for Cannafol Schools. This is how we get a lot of our long-term, um, facility maintenance, or you hear LTMFM. Oh, my numbers all backwards. Um, so my recommendation is obviously to approve these. This is how we get our funding. We have to have them all approved by July one.
I'll make a motion.
That makes sense.
I'll second.
Turn on the motion. Rob, you second?
Yep.
Okay. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Carrie. Consideration to approve the resolution approving School District sixty-fifty-one TCED Long-Term Facility Maintenance Ten-Year Plan Expenditure Plan, more of the same. Compliance?
Kurt, it's good from the roll call.
These are resolutions. That's why I said Brenda should be.
You're gonna do them both together, or?
You shouldn't. You really should do them separate.
Well, down now.
That's okay. I tell Brenda, you're ready. She's ready.
You guys are calling me out on that.
Resolution approving and authorizing the submission of the district's tenure plan to the Minnesota Department of Education. Sorry, I'm gonna hear Rob.
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Brenda, yes. Bob?
Aye.
Jerry?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
So it's a nine for six?
Six.
That's a six.
Hmm.
Is it a motion?
We did the first one, yeah.
So now she'll do a roll call again for the second one for Goodview County District.
Dave, first, we need a motion in second to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Jerry. Brenda, on the second?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Do you think?
Okay, we'll have a roll call on that. The resolution approving School District Number sixty-fifty-one Long-Term Facility Maintenance, not a, why are you doing?
It'll be the same.
Oh, same, it'll be the same, we're different. Oh, that's, that's Long-Term Facility Maintenance, tenure plan, sorry. Kurt?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?[1686.04] Yes. Katie?
Yes.
And Rob?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve the student lease device agreement for years 18, 19, and 20.
This will be nothing new. You've seen these many times before. Every time we enter a lease agreement, we have you approve it and then we go review it, just to make sure it's all in compliance. If you have any questions, it's in your package or it's up on the screen. But again, this is something you've talked about a long time, and the Technology Committee has reviewed it.
Great.
So we're just looking at Dell Chromebooks?
Yes, everything's listed there.
Yep. I believe they looked at a few of the device, but it's what kind of came to it now.
Yep. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? All in favor of the student lease device agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Item B, 7B, purchase of the computer workstation for STEAM.
Okay, and technically, you know, we don't have to come to you with things that are already built into the technology budget. Anything over $5,000, we think it's really important to come to you, so you, again, you just always hear what we're spending it on. The purchase of the computers and collaborative stations of STEAM, and I heard one of the board members mentioned STEM, very close, science, technology, engineering, ag, and math, because these STEAM labs will be very much used by our ag department as well. So there'll be computers, TVs, accessories, everything that goes along with that. But again, this is already built in the budget that you've approved. I'm just, here letting you know that she is making her first $52,000 expenditure of her budget. And I do give my recommendation to you.
I'll make a motion.
Brenda, on the motion.
We aren't giving any to you tonight.
Jerry did the second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that passes. Consideration to approve the 17, 18 property and liability insurance renewal.
I'm gonna pass this one over to Mr. Davison.
Just, I guess, page 28 in your packet. Comparison, far right in front is the actual budget we had for last year for property insurance and workers' comp. The actual expenditure for property, which we will be approving tonight, was $87,000 last year. The low quote, and the one that our agent is recommending we would pursue would be with Hanover, $72,000. They went out and saw, the report is getting out of the school property insurance business, but there still was a market to have some competition. Actually, they have four bids, two very similar on the low end and two very similar on the high end. All the intricacies in between, very apples to apples. So as Laura Feuver and Jerry Gag can put things through, and I've met with them, they really recommend that we would not only go with the low bid, but they're comfortable with that with Hanover. The workers' comp, we'll go limit on that. We have Ram Mutual that is approving that. It's not what you were approving tonight, but $43,000 total package, probably over comp, $115,000, whereas last year our spending was $128,000. So usually you don't see that in the insurance, things are decreased, but about $13,000 decrease in our premiums for fiscal year 18. So the recommendation would be that we would go with Hanover and maintain Feuver Insurance as our agent.
Josh, what is inland marine? What is that?
I explain that better to you than me, but it used to be, Ron Feuver explained it, like your boilers and things if they're...
Okay.
Some, it doesn't make it, some just put property insurance quote together. The ones that you see, like the right specialty, that's like your old school, school property insurance quote, where they kind of go through each category. Hanover kind of puts everything together and includes it.
So there was only one bidder on this who gave us four companies?
Uh, one agent who got us four companies, yeah.
They've done well with us for a number of years and...
It's not only the local part, but very comfortable, back and forth. They're up here at a moment, and we need some things vice versa, so it's a very good relationship, and it was nice that they were able to find four suitors for us to just choose from.
Yeah, it's really unusual, but good.
I'll make a motion as well.
Seconded by Jerry to approve, what, Hanover?
Hanover.
And Ram as our work comp? We need both of those on that?
Yeah, pressure just to operate, don't ever twice on that.
Yep. I'm sorry, who's second?
Me.
Rob? Motion in the second to approve the property and liability low bid as shown. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Consideration to approve the 17, 18 C membership.
We've been a member of C well before my time, Mr. Sussker as well. You really should belong to C, which is Schools for Education Equity, or MAREA, which we did try last year. They gave us a pilot membership, if you remember correctly. I don't think it's worth the money to join both, and so when you saw those reductions two board meetings ago, you saw no payment to MAREA, M-R-E-A, but I do believe C is well worth the money. They do a lot of our legislative stuff, and it's really important that we be heard responsible as such. So my recommendation would be go with C and not MAREA.
Any question to Brenda?
Okay.
Motion by Brenda, seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor of the 17, 18 C membership, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Consideration to approve the trap team activity fee as part of the yearly family cap.
Okay, just to give you a little recap, since Jake isn't here, trap shooting, and there's a few of us in the room that have trap shooters, they pay $200 instead of the $125. And what that is, is to cover the ammunition and things like that. But what we're finding is, like most sports, if your child's in track, you need to buy them tennis shoes. If your child's in tennis, you buy them a racket. Is that the right word, racket? So what we're proposing is bringing that down to 125. Trap shooting is well into like the 140s now, participants. It's one of the fastest growing activities. We just don't think it's fair to charge those families without it hitting the family cap. They still have to pay for their own ammunition, so it's not really saving the families any, except...
Oh, but it won't include ammunition?
No, you'll pay that instead.
Women don't need ammunition?
What's that?
Is it school?
No. No, you purchase it when you get there, just like anything else, you know? But the difference is, is that, say you have kids in multiple activities, that 125 might be considered the family cap. Because see, what's happening now is, as soon as they don't pay at all, because free and reduced, or something like that, you're seeing a lot of kids getting the money reimbursed anyway. So this is just a better way to go, to have all sports exactly the same, and anything additional like rackets, or tennis shoes, or ammunition, you pay for on your own. And so that's, that's our recommendation, just to help the families out a little bit.
Why did it, why was it 200 to start?
Uh, because it included the ammunition, and because it was a new sport, and we didn't know for sure what it was going to cost, what it wasn't going to cost, you know?
But you had to pay, it was not included in that family cap. So it was regardless of if you hit that family cap or not, you paid $200.
She's got a ski shoe.
I do. Yes, I do.
Now...
But I think that, you know...
Does the district provide transportation?
We do not. We can't, because they have their...
Right. So really, the district doesn't do anything?
No, you will see that, you know, we'll be adding Schedule C when that comes around, and we start doing negotiations and things like that. We're looking at perhaps paying the coaches right now. They've all been volunteering.
Okay.
Kate?
I make a motion to reduce the trap.
Should approve the...
Motion by Rob to approve the trap team activity fee as part of the yearly cap.
And reduce it to 125. Do it one.
Rob, yeah?
Yes.
Say it again.
Reduce the fee to 125 for trapping. And include it in the family cap. Yes.
Second?
I'll second.
Jerry, on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Consideration to approve the final revised 16, 17 budget, I think it's on page 35.
Josh, I'll throw it up.
Opposed. Josh?
Again, just the real basic, uh, go ahead summary. Again, most of this stuff would fall into about 60 pages of information, but this was based down by a fund, which really is the basis of what you really want to understand and know. And the biggest one really is the general fund. The other funds are really ancillary to the general fund. Everything would go within that, other than things are broken down outside of general funds. Your transportation, operations, maintenance, teaching staff, that's all in your general fund. So what you see in the middle portion would be the initial budget that you approved back last May for fiscal year 17. The top would be the final revised budget for fiscal year 17, as you approve today. The projected audit totals, again, that's just if the revenues and expenditures hit exactly as we budgeted. It just starts from the end of fiscal year 16's fund balance in each of those funds, and then add the revenues, subtract the expenditure, and you get your projected audit total. The thing to note in the general fund, again, it's a more or less balanced budget. When you say you've got a positive of $7,000 on a $12 million budget, that really is, that's a balance. It's really not saying you're making ones or adding funds to your audit, because it really is less than a quarter of 1% of the budget. But to note, the $950,000 projected fund balance, what ours would suggest, and most would suggest, that you have 8 to 16%, so you have one to two months of your expenditures in reserve. We're on the very thin end of that, about 7.8, just over 8%, when we look at that $950,000. So when you're looking at making decisions of what do we spend on this, we spend not on that, while certainly an option is to dip into the general fund balance, we're really on the thin end of where we want to be audit-wise. So as you talk about maybe, you know, tightening things up or reining things in, that's what we'd be looking at in the future as we go forward. So what we present here, assuming as we get through the audit and finish out wrapping up fiscal year 17, that the general fund will maintain its position from where it was at at the end of fiscal year 16. Food service, we initially presented a budget that was gonna deficit spend a little bit, mainly with the summer food program. We're able to kind of erase that, and not that we're gonna be able to balance our budget for food service, which is a good thing, because there were quite a few expenditures. And again, mainly maintenance, and they kept up. Usually, you know, we try to take care of things as much as we can and bandied it through or get as far as we can until something happens. We have a lot of those things happen, you know, one, two, five, $8,000 thing here and there for food service, but really looked like projected we'll end up being okay in food service and not have to borrow anything out of general fund. Community ed, deficit spending, when you look at their fund balance, about $200,000 plus, as it relates to their expenditures, they're sitting very well, as an auditor would tell you, at, you know, 30 to 40% of their expenditures. So even though we are deficit spending that, he's in, fund balance-wise, in a good position. Where Jake would want to be concerned is adding more expense to that and continuing to deficit spend. Eventually, that pot would run out. Construction, we're just kind of looking at, that's the long-term facility maintenance project that was done last year. We should have everything wrapped up. Retainments have been spent more or less. There may be a few items to clean up, but we'll adjust that if we need. Again, if there were to be any fund balance in the construction account at the end of fiscal year, we'll carry over to 18. We pay those funds out of 18 to balance it out to zero. Debt services, just paying on our debt, field office auditorium and refunding. That's set by the county. We don't get to mess around with those too much enough, we were to have an excess fund balance. And then we have the opportunity at that point to manually do a reduction in the debt service. We already do that several years ago to help out taxpayers. Fortunately, in our county, we do a good job of collecting. They set it, collect it 1, 5% above, so generally taxpayers in Vidic County are good at paying taxes, and if we build up an excess or a balance in there, the state will adjust, or we can do it manually if we have an excess there. The trust and agency is your scholarship fund. You know, we're sitting at about $113,000 in there, fund balance-wise. Some of those scholarships are paid off on the fund balance. They earn interest, which is not very good lately, but some of it is such a decline or spend down as we go. Some of it is, we receive funds from the donor as it comes into system offset. The OPEB trust, that's a trust set up for other post-employment benefits, was $1 million at one point, and the idea that we'd take about $1,000, $100,000 each year for 10 years, so that it lasts the life of the debt service on that. Where, as you see, with the fund balance of about $200,000 at the end of this year, we're looking at about two more years of having that, and then really having to make some choices of what we're gonna do for funding some of our other post-employment benefits. Because not only will we not have that anymore, that's $100,000 a year we have to hit out of the general fund. So it's kind of a double layup there. And then the OPEB debt service is just the payment on that OPEB bond. Kind of quick and dirty of it, but this is just the general fund overview, and I got all of the information. If you'd like to see the detail of it in the office, or if you have any questions, I can do my best to answer what you have tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the final revised budget. I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Consideration to approve the final number of calendar days for 16, 17 school year.
Well, we got pretty lucky this year. Most schools are approved in four days, and had to dip into those inclement weather days, but we did January 17th and February 24th as days that were closed. You don't, we're not, you don't have to worry about that, but you do have to adjust your calendar.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Rob on the motion?
Yep.
Brenda on the second? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Consideration to approve the fall assistant coaches.
Okay, just a note, and they're up on the board, from Jake. He really wants you to know and to really rehear this again. Football does not hire all of these coaches, but you need to approve them. They are paid mostly through the boosters and through some of their fundraising efforts. Tennis, Karen Adele is technically a volunteer, but Coach Hanson and Coach Norsted jointly pay, and they kind of divvy the pay up. So I don't want you thinking there's three tennis coaches that are paid from the district. There's not. And that's all that Jake had for notes. I think you can see the rest.
Looking for a motion?
He did not mention volleyball, but with the numbers, I would, I think that we do something. I'd have to check if you want me to.
Yeah.
I would, I don't mind at all.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
So when something like this goes through, and the booster clubs pay for it, do we as a district, are we supposed to understand or know what they're paying the coaches to at the same time, because all money that comes through the district, has to come through the district and paid out by the district?
I should be get that free next week.
I'm just wondering if that's something we should know, too?
Are we saying the price, or is the booster saying?
Typically, they use Schedule C as our guidelines, because that makes it fair and equitable. You can't have an assistant coach that makes more than a head coach, you know, something like that. A lot of times internally, they make it work. I know that Paul and Mackenzie have made that work somehow.
Do, I don't make that adjustment. Mackenzie isn't on the tennis anymore. It would just be Karen. I don't know if you want to make that change at all, but...
Yeah, it makes a difference.
Yeah.
Okay, that is good to know. Jake did not say that this morning when I talked to him, so...
Your question, though, I'm a little confused by the question.
You'd like to know the dollar amounts are getting paid.
Well, yeah, do we know that with Title IX, is that something we need to, if there's coaches, other coaches that are being paid, since every, all money that is paid out by the district, do we have to know how much is going through the district?
A lot of them are volunteer, too. There's several on the football that aren't getting paid.
Correct, but there's some that are that we don't know, because they're being paid through the booster club?
That's correct.
But is that something as a district we should know, just in case, well, where are these coaches getting paid, even though it's through the booster club, you know, is someone getting paid this much and some, I mean, is that, is that something we need to know with Title IX? You know what I'm saying, so, well, what are you paying for, and dance is not a good comparison, but, because they're separate, but is that something we should still know how much money is going through the district to these coaches?
I don't understand what you mean by dance.
Will you approve their?
No, it's, I'm just saying, all money that comes, that is paid out.
Paid out to anybody.
Goes to anybody, it goes to the district, we as a district should know how much is going to these coaches as well.
You do approve, he makes a good point, the boosters, their budgets have to be approved by you, so that's where you would see that.
Yeah, that's all.
But you haven't seen that prior to approving this.
We just know that the booster club's paying for them, but we don't know.
Let me get that information for you, that's a very valid, I can get that for you.
Make a motion to approve as amended, including the question with Hanson from tennis.
Motion by Brenda with that amendment?
I'll second.
Second by Rob, that was close. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the fall coaches with the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry.
Does Jake know that?
We talked about it.
We might be surprising him.
I told him just to put a wall on there because if they're approved.
I just talked to him this morning.
They can pass it out.
Okay, consideration to review policy 425 and to review annual review of staff development this year 17 and public.
This came out of a big conversation with one of the members on the board about staff development and how its expenditures happen and things like that. So we just thought we'd put it on the agenda if there's any questions about policy 425 or anything related to staff development. I did attach their budget, so you kind of know, it's 2% of the overall budget, that ends up being about $150,000 that they can spend. You can see where it's broke down, where it says administration, that would be myself, that would be all of you when you go to your MSBA conferences, Lori or Josh, if they went to a conference, things like that. And then you see how it's broke down from the elementary and the high school. Katie is the rep, as she gets her feet wet and in that group a little bit more, I think that she'll be bringing back their budgets because they adjust them as well, you know. Sometimes the elementary might need a little bit more and they'll say, okay, high school, can we borrow from you? Or the year that we were doing the school ag training and the PLC training, a lot of times they change within. So even though you see the budget, they're really a good organization that really watches their pennies really, really well. The submitting process, if any of the teachers in the room were to submit to go to staff development, it would go to the site rep who's in their district, then it would go to the principal, and then it goes to me. So it really does have a really good tracking system. You know, there are years that they have given back to us a percent, they've been very generous that way. We haven't needed that in a while. Sometimes they carry over, sometimes we get very, very close to the full expenditure, but it's just on here tonight, if anyone had any questions or wanted some clarification, I wanted you to be on there, it's probably not a big item, but I just thought it would be a good one to have on here.
So there is a, there's 2% of our budget that goes into staff development, to some degree they choose how they're going to use that, with none of that money coming back to the, to the school, or does the, does the unpaid amount come back to the school?
It's a great question, unpaid amount does come back to the school. And they are very good with their money, but, you know, things like that, you know, when Amy was in charge of it, or anyone can tell you, sometimes just having a speaker in, someone, you know, PLC trainings, things like that, every year the money is spent very differently. It depends, you'll have a big meeting in September and they kind of kick those things off and what they want that to look like for the year. And what happens then is you might spend more on a speaker that year and maybe less in out-of district conferences and things like that. But this is money that we really can't regulate, but you do, it's very important that you see their budget, it's very important that their plan is, meets all state standards because it goes in my world's best workforce. If it's not complete, if it's not accurate, and if it doesn't cover all the bases, it gets rejected. So it is very, it's very technical, but it is good for us to review that, just because you're not there all the time. Katie, you know, you can bring that stuff back to the group anytime.
We have a meeting in August.
Yeah, that'll be your big one, you'll set that again for the year, you'll still have the $150,000 to use, but they'll kind of decide how they want that spent.
How do you decide like materials and supplies, or is that capital, like I've heard some, you know, should, projectors or, I don't know, speakers or something like that, should that be bought through this, or is this something that's told staff development?
It's got to have them grow as an educator. Sometimes it's paraprofessionals, we've sent our bus drivers to trainings, I mean, it's staff-wide.
That's what I'm wanting, is that, because I think there's been some, some stuff has been bought as capital, and I'm thinking, well, maybe that should be, you know, supplies that.
We really can't do that.
Yeah.
I can speak to that, materials and supplies are typically for things like a book study. Paraprofessionals did a PLC and they actually had a book that they purchased or whatever and they used that, it's almost, it's never been for any kind of tangible item, it's a throwaway, I shouldn't say throwaway, it's a book, it's some type of, maybe, maybe it's even accessible website or something like that to go do training. But I've, we've never done, if you're thinking like document cameras or anything like that, no, it's meant to basically educate them, add to their developmental achievement.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Who approves the conferences that folks go to? Is that go through the principals or?
It goes through site, it doesn't, even before it gets to the principal, it goes through site. Principals will sometimes deny them if it's not in the overall projection of things, and then they still come to my office as well. So there's actually four signatures that go on every single conference or anything they go to.
Okay, Bob, can I just, one thing?
Yeah.
See, it said 2% of the budget, just to clarify, it's 2% of the general revenue revenue?
Yeah.
So it's not the full $12 million budget, it's based on the state paid.
2% of the general.
General, yeah.
I should have said, I figured you knew that was only $15,000.
2% of $12 million.
I know you're good at that, I knew you did. Good clarification, Josh.
And that's more discussion item than an action item, isn't it?
Yes, it's just, I really wanted the opportunity for you to, you know, just to kind of review it, it's a good time to do it, it's end of the year, I just thought it was a good time.
Okay. Good. Consideration to approve the first reading of the 534 unpaid meal charge.
This is the stuff that gets everyone on the front page of the Star Tribune, 534 will be one you'll get very familiar with, it's unpaid meal charges. This policy is through MSBA.
46 and 47, if you're paging.
Oh, sorry, I'm just looking.
That's okay.
Okay. You know, this is the MSBA model policy, there were some things that we changed in it, you know, the original said $5, we'd like it $10 because Katie has three kids, all three of her kids go through, boom, you're already below $5 in your, in your, you're below the zero dollars. So I know you've had a chance to look this over, if you have any questions, I'd love to answer it. It's the first time all districts have seen this policy, but it does need to be started in this motion before July 1.
So we need the first reading?
Yeah, just the first reading.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of policy 534.
Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the revised policy 533 wellness.
533, you have actually seen before, the administration would like us to remove section 4, and I believe, Lori, did you put a line through it so they can see that easily?
No, I did not. It's 4D2. Page 54.
Okay, it's got a check mark. Rewards in a sense, school will not use foods or beverages to reward academic performance. What came up is PBIS, kids at the high school, and kids in the room know what I'm talking about, you can earn a pizza party or something if you've done well and get a ton of the, you know, the tickets. And by having this in here, we were actually violating our own policies. There are times and opportunities where FFA wants to have malts because it's milk appreciation month or something like that. We were not even meaning to, but we were going against our very own policy, so administration would like that line removed. We just think that sometimes it is okay to have a reward that might.
Because that would be like the popcorn.
Sure. At the elementary, they have popcorn, and technically you're violating.
You're violating that policy.
And so we just would rather have it removed.
Are we removing all of 2?
Yes, everything that's on check mark there.
Yeah, I listen to DUCED policies, they left there.
All the other?
I think it's commonly done.
I would, I would rather just have it gone than say, oh, we don't do it.
Don't do it, yeah.
You know, I mean, then you're arguing with parent, son.
Right.
And that's our recommendation from MSBA, that you don't have to.
You don't have to have it in there, and you don't have to agree with administration if you want us to leave it in there, but just know that if it's in there, we're going to start enforcing it.
Right.
And that's really unfortunate for, I think, for the teachers and the kids, and they saved up their tickets, how many tickets do you have, guys? You want your pizza party, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the revised policy 533 wellness.
Motion is by Kurt.
I'll second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion?
The rest of the items are crossed off, was that from previous revision?
Yes, those are previous.
Okay, so just the check mark.
Yeah, it's just the way we kind of keep track, so. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of the revised 533, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry. Superintendent presentation, 1617 year-end goals and staff survey.
You've got three minutes, I think I can do it.
You do it.
If I get through it, okay. You have a manila folder, I need this to be returned to me because it is part of a personnel file, my personnel file. No, I want everything in it. Smart aleck, and we reuse these folders. Okay, in the packet you'll see your mid-year evaluation, you, you did this with me, thank you for your great words of encouragement and all the things that I can continue to work on. You also see my three goals, I think we've, we've measured most of them tonight, talking about the facility five-year plan, I know that's something that we, we wanted to kind of wrap up. With this you'll see a staff survey, we sent this out for the principals, the assistant principal and myself. The principals would also like it to go out to the community, which we are working on over the summer, to kind of see feedback, what we can do better with them. The questions that were asked is my superintendent at community events, and you can see the results, oh, the percentages didn't show up, but it's close to 88% there. My superintendent represents Canton Falls very well, 90% thought that I did, I feel supported by my superintendent. One person thought on most issues, one person said that it has been inconsistent, one person thought that the words I hear lead me to feel supported, but not always followed by actions. And so I have three people on staff that think I could do better in this position, in this area, and I will definitely work on that because I want to be, I want to be better at that, yep.
There's a lot of I-don't-knows. Is there a group of people that this is hitting?
It's all, it's the teachers.
Okay. I mean, from the beginning, at community events, you know, there's a chunk of I-don't-know and.
Yeah, and, and I can see why, if they're not at community events, how would they know if I am? You know, they're just answering honestly, like, I don't know if she is or not. I don't know, that's how they answered. My superintendent is visible in my building, the light blue is yes, but I wish I saw her more, the dark blue is yes, so again, we're at close to 90% felt that I was pretty visible. One person did think I need to be more visible at the elementary, and I continue to try to walk through there as often as possible. Next page is my superintendent is fair and consistent, yes. This is one area that was definitely, I've got some no's. I had six people that said no, they did not feel I was fair and consistent. If you go back to the last page, which has the written things, you will see that a lot of people didn't think I was consistent and fair on unpaid days off, that continues to be a challenge for me. What one person feels is a once-in-a-lifetime event might not be, in my opinion. Confidential days continue to be somewhat of a struggle, what constitutes a confidential day or not. So I'm sure that those six people felt that way, and that's okay. My superintendent does a good job with our limited resources, like we're talking about tonight, 76% said yes, no one thought no, which is something I'm very proud of, three years ago when I did this survey, that was not the same response. One person appreciated that I wrote grants, one person said it depends on the situation, and one said most of the time. When I email or call my superintendent, I get a response, this was something that you wanted me to work on from the last evaluation. As you can see, very, a lot of people said yes, no one thought it was yes, I wish you'd give that quicker. I had one person say no, several people said I have not reached out to her in 1718, and one person said she is available when I need to see her. On the last page, I'm not going to go through this because we're over eight, but one of the questions that was open-ended, they could write anything they wanted, it said, I wish my superintendent would, and you can see the responses there, definitely have some things I want to, I want to continue to work on. But what made me the most proud is to see a very long list of areas of strengths of my superintendent. So that's kind of the final piece of that, this was also done with the principals, those results are in here as well. Again, that's part of people's personnel file, and I'll ask you to return that, I think most of you've got a chance to look through it. But I want to thank you for setting really good goals, I hope that when we set our next goals for this next year, they're as good or even harder for me to accomplish, I think that's how we're getting really great things done here, is because you guys are challenging me to, to always be better, and so I appreciate that.
Lori, you're always diligent in telling me where we are, where are we when it comes, what do we need our next years?
You'll bring a summary back now in July.
I will.
Yes, you will.
Okay, that was more of a discussion item, if, if anyone needs to spend more time on this, they can contact the district office and sit in there until they get everything answered, I think, that would be the best.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to rush anyone, it's just I didn't want to go in our time limit, so I did look at questions.
Again, please take the time to stop in the office when you have time and review those at your leisure. Upcoming informational items, we're past our time. Next regular meeting is at 6 o'clock on July 24th, and you see the number of things that we will be going through, probably not as many as tonight, but that's okay. The Constellation Energy Agreement, I see, that's who we okayed last year.
That's right, and we need to see what we save for a year, yeah.
And anything else you wish to bring on behalf of the board, please contact Lori.
Can I just ask, what would everybody think of a workshop session, just to talk about going forward, looking back where we've been for the last five years and where we've gone,